The flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to suspend the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the FY 22 budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So by law, per master's law, you do need to have a public hearing on your FY 22 budget. The budget I have on the screen for you is your two-page budget. Nothing's changed since you last looked at this on May 4. It up to members of the public who might have questions. I'm not seeing anybody in here at this time.
Seek a motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. We'll seek a motion to approve the May 3, 2021 Negotiations Executive Session Unit A minutes, May 17, 2021 Negotiations Executive Session Unit A minutes, May 18, 2021 School Committee minutes, May 18, 2021 Executive Session minutes, May 18, 2021 Budget Subcommittee minutes, and the May 24, 2021 Negotiations Executive Session Unit D minutes. Executive Session minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Correspondents?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, Dr. Flanagan is not here today. He's unable to make your call. So I would just give you a 30,000-foot view of what he was going to provide a little bit more information about. But in your drive tonight as correspondent, you received from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And basically, this is an 11-page overview or strategy or primer, if you will, on the work that needs to be done by school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts specific to racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. This overview of primer was adopted by both Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents as well as Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So your organization and my organization believe that part together and believe this is important work that needs to happen. We are in the beginning stages of this process. We have joint forces with another local district, the North Minnesota Community National School District, and we will collaborate with them and cost share with them, quite honestly, as we go through the process of really looking at racial equity, diversity, and inclusion in our practices and protocols in this district. So at some point down the road, when we talk to Frank Lysandeville, we'll have more detailed information for the committee. But I wanted to give you some background information tonight that you can review on your own. Certainly, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Dr. Branca. And that's all we have for correspondence.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Share the success. Natalie?
At TES Friday, May 28, was the last day for most of the TES interns. Mrs. Calnoff says that they wish the eleven seniors a bouncy walk. And that if you could help get some awareness, that in a short time, we had made significant impact at TES, then we would be sure to miss. They have been busy planning and preparing for their traditional everyday events, including the TES senior walk, which will be this Friday, Field Day, Fifth Grade Fun Day, and Moving On Ceremony, as well as Move Up Day. And they look forward to celebrating the students' achievements and having lots of fun. At TMS, they have just started their end test testing. They have activity days planned for each grade after their end test testing is done. They're also preparing for the Moving On Ceremony for eighth grade on June 11. They have a number of other fun activities planned for eighth graders right through the end of the year in order to celebrate all their hard work throughout the year and throughout middle school. At THS, this week is all about graduation and senior week. Seniors enjoyed a fun day today, including a tour of family park as well as lunch and shopping at Farnell Hall. Tomorrow, they'll afford to sign yearbooks and enjoy the day full of exciting amusements at Trinity Farms. On Thursday, they're heading to the beach where they can relax, take in the sunshine. And then on Friday, they have their senior walk through elementary school, which will be followed by a barbecue back at the high school. Then later on that evening is graduation. The senior awards night took place last Thursday where over $70,000 in scholarships were distributed. All the senior recipients are beyond grateful for the scholarships they received. The high school interns at TES felt so appreciative for the opportunity that this internship was and were so grateful that when they were welcomed, they were welcomed by a poster board with all their pictures as well as sunglasses and a Starbucks gift card from all the administration and teachers. Each of the classrooms that the interns were in also made such cute gifts for the seniors on their last day, and they cannot thank them enough. Then on Monday, June 7, the seniors are having their prom at the Blue Ocean.
So it clearly came from a senior perspective. It's all about senior week of graduation. The kids taking out casts don't think it's a lot of senior graduates. Good job now.
So this is Natalie's last meeting with us. So thank you, Natalie. You've done an amazing job. Wish you luck next year in the future. You want to introduce us to your successor?
Yeah, so this is Grace Shandling. Hi, my name's Grace. I'm a junior at THS right now, and just like, thank you for the opportunity to be the senior representative.
Welcome, Grace. You got some big shoes to fill, but we know you can do it.
Grace, if you don't mind, would you just remind for people at home who may not know what the process was to become a student representative?
So first it was we had people from my grades selected someone they wanted to be a student representative. And then they narrowed it down to about three people, and we wrote an essay. And a bunch of the teachers read it, and then selected who they wanted to be the student representative.
Yeah, that's great. So it's not a popularity contest. It's not pick and favorite. These kids worked to do this. And it's a testament to their commitment to do this. So Grace, we're so excited to welcome you. Absolutely have huge shoes to fill with Natalie. Come on, I think we did a great job, so welcome, Natalie.
Thank you.
Subcommittee update. None at this time. Personnel. Notification of resignation. Allison Kalanowski, THS Special Education Teacher, nine-plus years of service. Good luck, Allison. Unfinished business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll jump right into the slide deck. We'll go through our usual size at the beginning. COVID-19 update. I'll be happy. We no longer have to provide these. So as you can see, we're in great shape right now. There's one active case in the district, and that's at TMS. As we continue down, you can see that the community is absolutely trending in the right direction. We're in the gray again with only six positive cases in the last 14 days, a 1.36% positivity rate the last 14 days. And as we continue down, you can see that our quarantine data is minimal at best. Two people in quarantine as a result of the positive cases. So that's all we have for COVID update.
Come a long way.
We've come a long way.
Okay, 9B Superintendent Evaluation. The school committee evaluated Dr. Flanagan. Also this year, the, um, some of his peers also.
Best 360, yep.
You have 360 evaluation. So on goal one, winning the TPS through the pandemic, Dr. Flanagan scored exemplary. Goal two, MSBA and School Building Committee work, Dr. Flanagan scored exemplary. And overall, you received an exemplary performance for the year. As always, thanks, Mike. Great job. Keep it up.
Thank you. If I could just say a few words to that, I really appreciate, I really appreciate the committee. I think what made things great this year was the committee helped form and bought into context and data. And we stayed down the middle the entire time. We had different opinions, different views, different beliefs. But we stayed down the middle. We followed the science the entire time. So I thank you incredibly for your support with that. This exemplary rating, I certainly appreciate it. But that exemplary rating belongs to every administrator in this district in my central office who worked so hard this year to support me the entire way. It belongs to administrators in the school who created schedules and created mitigation strategies and kept our kids and staff safe. It certainly belongs to the teachers who did everything they could and worked with us to get our kids back, every single kid in this district back in March, which I am most proud of. Every kid in Tinsborough is back in school in March. That's the thing I'm most proud of this year. It goes to our custodians who prepared our schools, who cleaned our schools, our CAF workers who prepared, took care of kids all summer long with meals. So I get the nice rating and ranking here, and I appreciate that. But that is the work of everyone in this district, soup to nuts. And most importantly, our kids. Our kids who came in every single day, did what they needed to do, and were smart about it. So thank you for this, but it's absolutely, it's reflective of the entire Tinsborough Public Schools system. Thank you.
New business?
New business, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we have Mr. Ogden from the high school and Mr. Hook from the middle school here to start thinking about a return to normalcy, start thinking about bringing back some of our old traditions, start thinking about bringing back our old trips. So they're both going to prepare, they're present about student travel for the upcoming future. So I don't know who wants to go first.
All right, so obviously, we would have a rare up here during the COVID. And it was the first year we couldn't run the, you know, the Washington DC trips. We lost our group. And next year, we want to get that back rolling. So we've already taken a number of companies about the cost. The cost is looking at roughly around $1,000, you know, depending on if more kids sign up or less and how many buses we have to take for them. Pretty close to the price it was before the pandemic started. The itinerary is full with over 20 monuments, museums, places that we're going to see. On the way back, we do Alice Island and the Statue of Liberty. So it is a passion-packed trip. So it's about 200 bucks a day if you break it down that way. We looked at a whole host of other companies too, including maybe we don't take the buses. Maybe we take flights. Those trips were over $1,800 or so. So then we said, well, it's not really on us. Put this out to the families. How much are you willing to afford? They know there's a lot of struggles out there. So of the 150 students, we had 100, and four families responded. With 91% of them saying that the place wasn't a go and then had to come back. So they would do that. 95 of those families said yes, and that's what they would do. We also do fundraising. So previous before the pandemic stuff, we did a lot of fundraising. And all of those dollars were saved in accounts for those children. So if you sell them this trip, there's an account with money that will continue to do that going forward into the fall of next year. So we can get those back for those trips and those families. Hoping that you guys will approve us being able to go to Washington DC again. And the trip would be in April of 2022, April 11 through April 5.
At the high school, so this is the trip that was postponed for the past year. There were 18 seniors that were impacted that obviously will be unable to travel. But of those 18, we've already filled eight of those spots, which helps with the reimbursement rate for those families. And that was with minimal advertising or marketing. So I'm confident we can fill those other 10 spots once. The trip will travel in part for April vacation again. The window we're looking for is the 14th, 23rd of 2022. And the cost per student is just about $3,500. Again, I hope that we can get back to travel. I think it's a great experience, something that we've always been able to do here. And even once you get, we hope to be able to run some other national trips as well. Want some of those places over there.
Maybe a question better aim for Mr. Messina. And I know when COVID first hit, we had a lot of issues with the travel company. Were there credits that were postponed? I forget exactly how it worked. So do some of these students have credits? Are we even using that same company anymore?
No. Probably not, but we are.
We're using the same company?
Yes.
And the high school we are as well, because most of the families are, hey. Basically, older than your mom. So it was eight. It was really 18 out of the four at the time. I don't think what that state should be reimbursed. Once we get those 10 additional, 10 additional travel is in the, they'll receive the full reimbursement minus the $95 deposit. $95 deposit and the $160 insurance that we also, so they'll have that, okay, any money they have to put down aside that.
In the past, the insurance was optional, correct?
For our last, gosh, I'll say three or four years, we've said you have to buy insurance.
So insurance is mandatory?
Yes.
Is that noted in a policy anywhere that you're aware of?
We do that with the presentation and when we show what I present the trips to the kids.
So the answer to your question is no. It's a practice. It's not in a policy. And I think that should absolutely be kicked to the policy subcommittee to update our policy and say, going forward, given the headaches we just faced this past year, particularly with the eighth-grade middle school trip, that all trips should have the insurance on it.
Agreed.
So we can certainly bring that to Dr. Branca on the policy subcommittee this summer so that we're covered going forward.
And can we incorporate that and not even make it an option, just incorporate it into the prices of the road? Correct. That way, it's not. It's not an addition to the $1,000. It's $1,100, and you get the insurance with it.
Yeah, we've already been doing that.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to make it official just so we don't repeat what happened last year.
Correct. Agreed.
Any questions?
Just one quick one. Why were, obviously, last year was, was last year. There was definitely difficulty and concerns, and it came into a end-of-year or end-of-the-season cancellation, late cancellation. Is there a window? Just, who knows what next year looks like? Hopefully, we continue to trend in the right direction, but as far as when the last opportunity to bail out of a trip would be, just in case there were trend restrictions that still existed?
So within the, you have to do that. That's where you're not supposed to do. They have different timelines set on the dates. I believe 90 days is their big one for when you still get a piece of money back. Then you can also pull it back if you do use, hardly involved as well, what you paid, even if you have insurance.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then you explain that kind of the money they shelled out to put these hotels and keep them nice. So, you know, they are actually out money at that point.
So to that point as well, that's why the motion's written as well to contingent upon international domestic travel guidelines and health recommendations. So the school committee's covered in the sense that we have to make that decision. If you have to make that decision, that you said from the outset, that this is a contingent approval.
I'm sure if the parents had to spend eight hours on the bus with these kids, they'd pay the extra $800 bucks. But they don't.
Personal question. So for the 18 seniors that were on the trip, what kind of course do they take? Do they have to do anything to get the reimbursement back once it's all settled and everything?
Only 10, where I could look at it good. So we had, had to receive that full reimbursement minus the $95 and the $160. And that was on the order of when you cancel and when people sign up. So everybody else should have already received that. It's just plain, that was so only. Wanting to, I mean, kind of, I don't care, kind of, it won't, and then it's a follow-up. But that, yeah, that is not wrong.
So they don't have to do anything? It's just?
Nope.
Are there any plans to bring the Camp Borndale trip back?
Yeah, so we're exploring that. We've been in contact on the fall. Whether it's the right time to get you back back then. We talked about a spring trip. But they, they booked it. They basically have yearly schedules where they book students to school. So they were booked in this spring, so we're hoping to bring that possibly, you know, with all travel coming back now. Just coming here, but.
Any questions?
I will seek a motion to approve the planning of student travel opportunities as presented by THS and TMS administration contingent upon domestic and international travel guidelines and health recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, before we move on, were we supposed to make a motion to approve Dr. Flanagan's evaluation?
Oh, we were. Let's catch. I will seek a motion to approve Dr. Flanagan's evaluation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0.
Can I just make one additional comment or question? Did you ever look into anything other than Camp Borndale for the six years?
Yeah, so we've looked at other trips that we made. If travel goes the way we want, we're looking at something for them in the spring as well. And our teachers did an excellent job of trying to do the activities that they did at Borndale, bringing them into schools or bringing in what came and doing some of the things that the school did. So they just worked really hard on that and more realization of we, some of the main things.
Finance, Mr. Messina?
Off the desk, I'm sorry. We're driving the slide deck. I'm driving this stuff as well. Signing of bills, 11 bill warrants were presented today tonight. I do have them all backed signed, and the list of warrants on this account in the mouse are in your drive. Signing of payroll, we will do at your next meeting. Anything else for other?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if you just draw your attention to the screen now, you can see we have a busy month ahead of us here in June. We spent a lot of quality time together. I would just ask anyone who intends on attending graduation on Friday to please send me an email or a text or some kind of notification besides the parents at the table. I know that you're coming. I hope you're coming.
Yeah.
Just so we can, Mr. Ogden can plan accordingly. But we do have several negotiation sessions coming up as well. So there's a lot going on in June.
School committee discussion. It's a bittersweet night. It's Mr. Moran's last meeting with us. Spent nine glorious years on the committee. Really sad to see you go. It's been a pleasure working with you. I've been on four years now. I don't know if anybody else does. My name is Santa Mike. Tony, you've been with them for the last time, right?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
No, it's been a pleasure, Mr. Moran. Maybe we've been together all nine years, actually.
Yep.
So good luck and enjoy your Tuesday nights going forward.
Certainly.
Oh, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hopefully, this is.
And you should share that with the guy that's been on nine years with you.
Most certainly.
You gonna go around?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, Mr. Moran, thank you very much. I appreciate these only six years we spent together.
Sure, sure.
As Mr. Tenerelli has said, we hope you enjoy your Tuesday nights and tune in and see how much you miss us. Natalie, thank you very much for the past year. You've done a wonderful job representing the students here in the high school. And I definitely wish you the very best in everything going forward. We never leave you. I want to wish everyone a very wonderful, well-deserved holiday. This has been a crazy year. I want to thank everyone, the administration, staff members, teachers. You've all worked incredibly hard this year, and we greatly appreciate all of your efforts. Even though it was a challenge, we ended up making it. And the kids will be better for it because of all of your efforts. Hope everyone has a great summer, a safe summer. And that's all I have for this evening.
Rob, I'm gonna skip over you, Mike.
All right.
Because he's the last.
I'm off, thank you.
Grace?
I would just like to personally thank the class of 2021 and the administration at THS for nominating me to serve as a student representative on the school committee. I've gained an incredible amount of knowledge watching the superintendent and the school committee board members navigate making decisions during such unprecedented times during the pandemic. And I'll forever be grateful for the kindness extended to me personally by each and every board member. And I wish to thank Dr. Flanagan and all the members of the school committee for their unerring commitment to the education for the students in Tinsborough. You're each so amazing, and thank you again for allowing me this privilege of serving on this board.
Wow, I think everything that's probably had to be said has been said, but good luck to all of our seniors. And Natalie, it's you as well. I've only been here for a year. I don't have the nine, Tenerelli does. But, you know, it's been great working with you, Mr. Moran. Yeah, all the best.
It's because you haven't worked with them for nine.
I just didn't want it done. I was all set. Lucky you.
Mr. Moran, again, thank you for your service to this committee, to the children of Tinsborough over the years. To Natalie, congratulations on graduating and good luck in the future. Take your nameplate with you when you leave. And thank you to Dr. Flanagan and your whole team for this entire year. To all of our seniors, thank all your teachers, your administrators, your custodians, your nurses, your, whoever I left out, the librarians. Everybody, thank them on your way out from middle school to elementary school all the way through. Congratulations to the teachers, to the administrators who have made these children educated and ready to move on to the rest of their lives.
Never forget where you came from. And that is it.
Thank you.
Okay. I do know. I don't want to redo it all.
Maybe you'll get my name right.
Yeah, maybe. But I also just want to say that all the seniors really enjoy this week. You've really worked hard this year. It's been a tough year with a lot of obstacles, and you deserve every moment of this going forward, this week and graduation and prom. Just be safe and be careful. As a mom myself, that's what I ask. But, and also thanks to all the administration and Dr. Flanagan, who has been an amazing leader this year. Thank you.
Mike, thanks for, the last two years have been great, serving with you, and thanks for your time here. It's a significant commitment, and thanks for making that commitment over the last nine years. I appreciate it, and the town appreciates it as well. Natalie, congratulations. We'll see you Friday night. And Grace, welcome. Hold on tight. It's an interesting ride with this crew. So to all the seniors, congratulations, and thanks to all the teachers and staff and administrators for navigating through this year.
Grace, welcome. It's gonna be a great FY. I'm looking forward to it. Natalie, I'll say goodbye to you on Friday night. Mr. Moran?
Yes, sir.
Nine years. It's a long time. You know, I've known Mike longer than nine years. Our daughters have been friends for a long time. Mike taught CCD. Mike coached sports. Mike's volunteered. Everything he can do in this town. That's just the kind of guy he is. As a member of this committee, you spoke your mind. You always advocated for what you believed. You never cowered. You didn't take the majority. You spoke your mind, and I think that's something that is important. I think kids can learn from that. You've been fair. You've been honest. You were an outstanding chair. I'm just so thankful for your, for your time with this committee and what you've done for the students of Tinsborough Public Schools. You were also the chair when I got hired, so thank you for that.
Yeah, there you go.
So just, just, I know that this isn't goodbye. I'm gonna see you around town and I look forward to that. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, you know, me and speeches, right? I love speeches. So. So I only had a few minutes to prepare the speech. Oh, there you go. There you go. Sorry. I figured you were all done.
I'm never gonna talk like this.
There you go, well.
I want to say a special thanks to the 11 seniors who entered at TES this year. It's a tremendous program. My son was fortunate enough to work with one of them. He keeps asking me to take him to graduation so I can see him graduate. So, great job there. Natalie, great job this year. Wish you the best of luck. We know you don't need it, though. You're gonna be successful in anything you do. We can already tell. Grace, welcome to the team. Like Becky said, it's a wild ride, so strap in. It'll be fun. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you for, like Mike said, just being who you are, not compromising on your beliefs at any point, standing up and putting the kids first every step of the way. It's important. It shows your commitment to the town and really appreciate it. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you these last four years.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate it. Good luck, Natalie, and welcome, Grace. So I do like speeches, and I found one I can recycle a little bit from 2015 when I actually gave one to the graduates then. But, you know, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the current and past members of the school committee. So it's, you know, nine years, there's been a lot of, you know, every three years or six years, depending on how long people stay or turn over. So I like to thank those school committee members for serving and obviously the current school committee members tonight. I have learned a lot over the past nine years, a lot about the budgeting process and a lot of stuff, especially negotiations. Good luck, Julie.
I'm sure you don't want that.
I'd also thank the administration. You know, it's been impressive to see the administration work so hard across, you know, the main office and all the schools working together. And also, you know, again, Dr. Flanagan, appreciate your tenure here. You know, I really am very glad that you're in this position, glad to contract with this country. So, you know. So, so I'm very appreciative of that. And I'm also very appreciative of the community for supporting me for three terms, you know, on this committee, right? It takes a lot to campaign or to get signatures and stuff like that. And this year is actually, it means a lot to me because I do have a senior graduating this year, it's my youngest daughter. And both my daughters paved their way, their own way, through Tingsborough, and so that's really good. One back in 2018 was Sarah, and this year's Emily. So I'm proud of both of them very much in their own right. And so Natalie, I'm not able to give a speech this year at the graduation, but I'm gonna give you a recycled speech that I gave a couple of years ago, and I think it's really reflective of these times. So the next chapter of your journey will be challenging and rewarding, so this is to the graduates. You're gonna have successes and failures, you must rise to meet these challenges, and I think in the past year, 2020 was a challenging year for these kids. Have full faith and confidence in yourself mostly, because you can do this. But I'm gonna repeat the advice I gave back in 2015, you know what this is, right? It's endeavor to persevere. And so, so that word endeavor, you know, it means to work hard, to struggle, to strive, to be your, to strive to be your best. And I really think that this 2020, 2021 student body has done a great job, really. They've endeavored to get through this pandemic, to work together, to bring, you know, the curve down here in town. So I think that's really great, and it shows their hard work. There's a lot of stuff that was missed out, but I really think that it's starting to pay off now, right? And then to persevere really is to be persistent and endure, so to overcome life's challenges, to keep at it, you know, whatever life throws your way. And I really think, again, resiliency. There's a really good theme to these students, and I think it's important that, you know, you get out, you socialize again where you can, you really make those connections with your friends, and I think it's important. But most of all, don't ever give up on your dreams, because that's important. And, you know, have those goals, those oriented for your life. Just always respect those who supported you, care for others with compassion as you navigate life. So that's my wish as to the 2021 graduating class.
Awesome.
Thank you, though. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mike. We have no need for executive session, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie 700. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.